Welcome to your city commission study session. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on channel two at six P. M. and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. Study session for Tuesday, July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. First up is presentation of two thousand twenty-one audit.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, an annual item we put on the agenda every summer is to have a presentation of the previous year's audit. So tonight we have Michael Keenan from Hood and Associates who performed the city's audit and he will present the two thousand twenty-one audit.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's nice and cool in here compared to outside. I'll try to only talk for maybe a half an hour. If that's a no, I'm just kidding. But again, my name is Michael Keenan. I'm with the auditing firm of Hood and Associates here to present the results of the December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one audit. And I believe you've been provided the larger document, the annual financial report, as well as the single audit, which is the report on the expenditures of federal awards for the city, as well as our required communication and management letter. But I've have a little PowerPoint presentation that I'll go through. First of all, a little bit about Hood and Associates. We've been serving Missouri and Kansas, Oklahoma and Texas. You may recall last year, our firm name was Cochran Head Vic and Company. But we were acquired by a firm out of Tulsa, Oklahoma headquarters. And so now we're called Hood and Associates, but they maintain all of the offices in Missouri and Kansas and all the personnel. So other than the name change, our services and the personnel and our locations are exactly the same. We also go through what's called a peer review where we have a, an outside independent CPA firm will come in and review our quality control standards. And we have been awarded the highest rating as a result of that review. We're a member of various professional organizations, including the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, the AICPA, the ICPA Government Audit Quality Center. And one member, which happens to be me, is a review specialist for the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement in Financial Reporting. And I'll get to that in a little bit regarding the city's very impressive record. And we're licensed to practice in Missouri, Kansas, Oklahoma and Texas. The scope of our audit was again the
God bless you.
Thanks.
Comprehensive annual financial report, I'm sorry, annual comprehensive financial report. They've changed the name. I'm still having to deal with trying to change that on myself. Again, this, the city has received this government finance officers achievement, certificate achievement financial reporting twenty-seven consecutive years with the two thousand twenty audit. We believe that this one has been presented to the GFOA and we believe that this will qualify again for that certificate, which is twenty-eight consecutive years. And to achieve that objective, you have to provide an easily readable financial statement, financial report. And it has to have sections, the transmittal letter, introductory steps. And especially if you look at the back of this, the statistical section provides ten years worth of data for revenues, expenses and copy taxes. It's very good information if you want to compare where things are today, where they were previously with the notation of two thousand nineteen and twenty with the COVID has certainly changed a lot of the metrics. Also, our scope of the audit was a single audit. And that's expenditures of your federal awards. There were two major programs. Program Section Eight Housing was one of the major programs. And also the coronavirus state and local recovery funds or the ARPA funds. Those were selected and we have to perform certain tests of compliance, which we, we performed and we've issued what's called an unmodified or clean opinion. We didn't have any findings as far as compliance goes. Our responsibilities as the auditors is to conduct our audit in accordance with general accepted auditing standards, as well as governmental auditing standards and also the uniform guidance. Uniform guidance dictates what we do, what procedures we perform related to the city's federal awards. We're also responsible to plan and perform our audit to obtain reasonable, but not absolute assurance the financial statements are free of material misstatements. Again, what that means is we take a risk-based approach and we test certain transactions and confirm certain balances. However, we do not test all transactions, so we can't say absolutely there's no material misstatement. But we perform enough procedures, we believe we can give an opinion on the financial statements. We're also responsible to report on internal controls over financial reporting as well as compliance with laws and regulations. The auditing standards board of the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, the AICPA, recommend that we communicate these matters to the governing board. At legal acts, none came to our attention as a result of us performing our audit procedures. Changes in significant accounting policies. Again, there were no changes in significant accounting policies for this last fiscal year. We're pleased to report we had no difficulties or disagreements with management. Truly, we didn't.
Oh, no.
I saw you guys were looking around, but
Just giving him a heart.
We did, and most of all, we had full cooperation and access to all the books and records. So whatever we wanted to look at, transactions, checks, receipts, we were provided that information to perform our procedures on. A financial in compliance audit really addresses these following three questions. The first question are the financial statements free of material misstatement. And our answer to that is we have issued what's called an unmodified opinion that indeed the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. Commonly more, you might claim as a clean opinion for that. But that's the highest level of opinion that we can offer on external financial statements. So that's the best opinion you can get. The second question are internal controls over financial reporting adequately designed and operating effectively. And our procedures did not identify any deficiencies in internal controls that we consider to be a material weakness. Again, had we done so, we're required by our profession to report those matters to a governing body. And finally, that the city of Leavenworth, Kansas comply in all material respects with finance-related laws and regulations. Again, after our procedures were formed, no noncompliance was noted with the finance-related laws and regulations that govern the city's operations. Included in is our management letter comment and our required communications. Again, it kind of outlines what I just went through. And the one recommendation we had relates to future accounting pronouncements. And they seem to be issuing those every year. As far as the coming pronouncements, the one that might impact the city is what's called Gatsby eighty-seven. That relates to leases. So if the city has operating type leases, again, the, the reporting of those will, will change. For instance, that could be a copier where you make rental payments for, for five years. It doesn't count as a capital asset, so we don't account for it as a capital lease. Now, with the new lease agreements, standards, which are following the public standards, any of those off balance sheet or operating leases will now be capitalized and called a right-to-use asset. It's an intangible asset and there'll be a, a right-to-use liability. So in essence, they're going to be treating all leases similar to being capital leases. So they'll be reporting those. And again, that will be at the government-wide level. That will be implemented next year. And then we had some prior year comments, again, that all are addressed in the report. But all of those were, our recommendations were implemented that had to do with account reconciliations. We had some entries in the prior year that the recommendation had been implemented. Also, the recording of bond premiums when certain bonds are issued, that recommendation was also implemented. We also had a discussion point on, again, cybersecurity. That's a prevalent topic for both private and public entities. And it's just something that we've been putting in all of our management letters to keep that upfront because it's always a possibility. And I think the neighbors right next to us encountered a breach of their security system, so. And then finally, said Hood and Associates certainly appreciates the opportunity to serve as auditors for the city of Leavenworth. Want to thank Paul and Roberta for her first year, did a great job and the staff was great. So overall, very professional and assisted us in whatever requirements and information we asked for. And it's nicer, we don't have to come in and make a bunch of journal entries where we can actually audit the work of what's presented to us, so.
Good, good.
The very, very good ice records and I think we maybe had one small adjustment. That was it, so. That concludes my presentation. I'd be pleased to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Have any questions?
No, I don't, I don't have any. Why, why did they change the lease issue?
I think they were following the private industry practices of our companies.
Okay.
Publicly held as well privately. Because a lot of, you know, the term off balance sheet, there were, I think, if you recall Enron from years ago, had a bunch of leases that were off balance. So they weren't telling the picture, so I think
Okay.
They're saying, okay, whether you lease and it's a capital lease or you lease and not, we need to report it as either an asset, tangible asset
Right.
or it's a intangible asset. So, I mean, the copier, again, most of those leases, they structure so they don't, you didn't want them to be a capital lease.
Right, exactly.
Operating and you make your rental payments.
Right.
That will still stay the same, so you'll watch it.
Okay, okay.
You'll budget for these payments, you know, twelve payments times X. That will be lease payments, but when we come to the government-wide, the full accrual, then we'll show like we do with your bonds and your capital assets. Those will be an asset and a, and a liability on those. But for your fund and your budgeting, you'll still look at it as we're going to make twelve payments, four payments, whatever, whatever the lease structure calls for.
That sounds good.
Questions for Mr. Keenan?
No.
No. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
For all your hard work.
And if you have some questions later on, certainly Roberta has my contact information or she'll be able to answer those for you. Either way, you can always let us know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is text amendments, development regulations.
This will be Julie Hurley, the Director of Planning and Community Development.
Hello. So this is our annual review of the development regulations. Every year we go through and make some updates to this. And most of these are items that just come up throughout the year using the regulations primarily. This is going to be clarifying language that's, that we found to be inconsistent or just not as clear as we would like it to be. There's typically not really that many large policy changes in this. So I'll just kind of go through quick and hit a few of the bigger ones that we're looking at for this year. So in Article Two, which deals with our applications and procedures, we do intend to add a stipulation that a parcel may only be split or combined via an administrative plat one time. We do lot splits and lot combinations administratively, which makes it easier for folks who are just trying to split once or combine two lots that they own. What we run into is when people try to do that multiple times with the same set of lots. That gets it to be very messy in terms of legal descriptions and lot lines. And we've run into that situation a few times recently, so just adding this will help us keep it clean. You can split or combine administratively once. After that, you'll have to go through a full plat process, which will go through planning commission and then a full recording process with the county. So just making sure we're keeping people's properties, you know, kosher and clean so that everybody knows what's going on. And then in Article Four, one thing that we tend to get a fair number of questions about are tiny homes. And we just don't have that addressed at all in our regulations. So that'll obviously be an area where we're going to work with building codes. And we'll be taking a look at what other cities have done to address that and just making sure that, you know, we're, we're looking at that housing option for the city. And we have a lot of lots in town where that may be an appropriate building type on it. And we just don't have a way to address that clearly right now. So taking a look at what we can do to make sure that is addressed.
Right.
Article Five, that's access and parking. We've just got some clarifying language in there, same thing with our article on signs. Board of Zoning Appeals clearing up some things in there. And then our, our article with the definitions, what most of these are dealing with, we have several definitions for different types of bed and breakfasts. I'm not sure why that happened when the development regulations were written, but we've got about five different definitions for bed and breakfasts. And so we just need to kind of consolidate and clear that up a little bit. And then we run, we're starting to run into a lot of short-term rental questions. And we do have short-term rentals addressed in terms of how those are handled in another part of the regulations in terms of needing a special use permit and then going through that process. But we don't have a good definition that addresses those. And so we've been having to kind of make different requests fit to the definitions that we have when people call up. And so what we want to do is we have, we have a definition of a residential home stay. And that's what has fit most closely for folks that have called in and wanting, and wanted to do a short-term rental. So we just want to kind of refine that definition a little bit to make sure it's fitting what we're actually looking at doing and that it's not being too restrictive or, you know, have too few restrictions. And so just make sure we're clearly defining that. So again, those are just kind of the bigger ones that we're looking at that are going to be changing some things. The rest of it is really just clarifying language without any major changes in there. So at our September planning commission meeting, we'll hold the public hearing. And at that point, we'll have the actual language. This is just kind of the topic, so we'll have the language all written out. We'll advertise for that public hearing. The planning commission will take a look at it, make any changes or recommendations that they feel are appropriate at that time. And then it'll come back to the city commission for a final review and approval after that. So this is just kind of your chance. If you have anything else you want us to look at, you can certainly let us know and we can do that ahead of the planning commission meeting in September. So if you have any questions, I can answer those for you.
Do you have very many short-term rentals now?
We do not. Well, I'll say, we only have, I think, one that has a special use permit. We know that there are others operating in town. And we had talked about it as staff a couple of years ago and decided not to, you know, actively pursue the ones that we kind of hear about, you know, in terms of kind of hunting them down.
One is, I just wondered if there were others.
Yeah, we, we've got the one. When folks call us, we certainly, you know, have them go through the proper channels. So that may be something we look at at some point
Yeah.
in terms of looking for ones that we know are existing. But up to this point, we have not gone out and searched for those.
Okay. I have a question on the tiny homes. So have you had several people that would like to do that?
We have had questions about it.
Okay.
We haven't had anybody actually pull any building permits for it. So again, that'll be something where we work pretty closely with building codes to make sure that, you know, that is addressed in our adopted building codes and just that any regulations we have are lining up with what we've got in place.
Now, I know, yeah, I know there's, when I go out for my other job for outreach in Easton, when you go into the town, they have a little tiny home out there. My other question then is, and I don't know if this would be under this regulation here. You know, some people build tiny homes, but they put them on a trailer or I guess so they can
They can be movable.
Movable, so I don't know if that would be another issue with me.
So yeah, that would be something that would need to be addressed with those regulations. Because I, I'm not sure what the building codes are at this point
Right.
for addressing those tiny homes. I, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Right, so yeah, I was figured you were keeping that in mind.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Hurley.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Do we have anything that defines the difference between recreational vehicle and building home?
We do. Yep, those, yep, those two are defined separately in our, in the definition chapter.
I just wasn't aware.
Yep, we've got a whole bunch of definitions if you ever hear any.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you.
Some of those tiny homes, they look like sheds.
Like sheds, yeah.
Well, no.
Sheds out there on Twenty and Spruce, and Spruce look like tiny homes.
There's all those ones there. My, my wife said something to my granddaughter yesterday about, look at all the tiny homes. I said, those aren't tiny homes, those are sheds. But some of them are so, I mean, they look like they were sheds if somebody put a door on them.
Right. Right. Okay, next steps, continued discussion of American Rescue Plan Act, A R P A funding, ARPA.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, this is both an update item, but also share a little bit of progress. I have received some feedback from commissioners, so I wanted to continue our discussion on ARPA funding. The initial, as again, the initial tranche of four point two seven million, the city expended about one point one five of that in two thousand twenty-one for expenses beyond revenues. We have received our second tranche, so the city does have available under discussion, which we talked about at the May seventeenth meeting, seven point three nine million dollars. Again, at the seven, May seventeenth commission meeting, the governing body did review and discuss an outline of potential uses. Following that meeting, items that had general support from the commission have continued to move forward. And when I say move forward, we have, we have, we didn't get anything approved that night. We continued to refine numbers you asked us to look at. So nothing, nothing plans or anything like that at that point. And so a few items then have been brought to the attention of staff. So tonight, to go over some of the items we talked about on the May seventeenth, to go over some of the new items, continue that discussion. I expect that we'll be talking about this every couple of months, if not more frequently, as we decide over the next couple of years, how to expend all these funds. So what I plan to do tonight is to go through, I have a short PowerPoint presentation to kind of go through to introduce some of the new items. Here's kind of where we started, as this was just a starting place. This was created by staff, but also based on a lot of commission input. We talked about these, I won't rehash them all. That's a little bit small in there, let me go ahead and do the slideshow here. All, all those items we talked about, this is the stuff we talked about last commission meeting. So going forward, so the next steps, at this point, it would seem that the upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant were the critical items we talked about that would need to move forward. Not looking for tonight for consensus to actually undertake them, but I would like a nod in the direction of we have there's one. And that's what we need. We, we've really refined numbers, I'll get to that in a minute. We think all we can do, all of those big items that we mentioned, under three million, don't have to pass those on as rate increases to the public. Any more information, we'll probably bring those back as a separate study session here in the next couple of weeks to really hone in on those. But, but that's really the big one that we were hoping tonight to continue to get that thumbs up from the commission to move forward. One other one I'd like to point out, the business assistance grant specifically related to fire suppression and ADA upgrades have garnered some attention. We had a nice meeting with a business owner in Wendy from Main Street last week in here and they are facing that. They've made significant investments in their downtown business. They have some fire suppression needs, those are expensive systems. Every city in the state is going through this. The state legislature is trying to address this through tax credits and through other efforts. It's not anything we're doing differently. A lot of this is about safety and these historic buildings. And so it is absolutely possible to start at a much lower amount than the five hundred thousand dollars, maybe to do a trial or a pilot, see what the interest looks like, see what we can get. Staff would be happy to put some criteria together on size of building, amount of investment. But so, you know, if there is a consensus tonight that, hey, we kind of like that idea, we could draft a pilot program, looking for direction from the commission for some amounts, some award amounts, and we could start doing that. I know one business is interested as soon as possible in getting to that. Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see what that looks like, yeah, a pilot program. So we'll, we'll work, we'll work on an outline of a pilot program to bring back to you pretty soon. And so we can get that going, because I know there's some projects that really would like to, to move forward. We did mention this at the budget, this is probably not as pressing as the first two, but, but one more that I'd like to continue to keep on your radar is moving forward with one of the fire trucks. We had a picture in the CIP section of the budget of our oldest. We have, we have seven, we've replaced four in the last five or six years. Really good equipment for our community, for our employees. We have three older ones, one significantly older than the other two that still need to be replaced. All the ones that we've replaced now are bond financed. So if you could purchase one, you could probably push out replacing the other two and bond finance those in future years. The price of fire trucks just seems to be exploding. Just even independent of COVID, they just, the, and the lead time is so long. So again, not anything as pressing as the first two items, but something that if the commission thought that that was a good idea, we could start getting some numbers from Pierce and some other manufacturers and maybe bring them back.
If we could start doing that, I mean, that's just, that would be great.
It's about a two-year seems to like build time. So, so if, if it looks like there's some support for that item to replace that, one of those fire trucks, we'll at least bring you some information, again, nothing, nothing binding, but
Is there a requirement to spend the ARPA funds by a certain point?
So they have to be obligated by December twenty twenty-four?
Okay.
And then spent by December twenty twenty-five?
Good.
Okay.
Does it take, how long does it take a fire truck, once you order it?
About eighteen months.
Yeah, because they have to build it, yeah.
Well, and you're, you're in the queue, quite a, quite a ways back.
Somebody else is
Okay, so we will, we will take those steps on those and you'll see those at some study sessions coming up on those, on those three items. So now I'm going to continue, we'll talk about some existing items, but continue on some new items that I've gotten from feedback from commission. So critical infrastructure, again, this is where we drilled down a little bit more into the three big elements inside the wastewater treatment plant that were pointed out in the condition assessment study. And that staff leaves are critical to the, the functionality of the plant. So I'm going to pass this one out, if you wouldn't mind passing that down. This is a discussion I had with Commissioner Martin, but also a discussion I've had with this commission, the previous commission. As we try to combat and work to guard against speeding issues in neighborhoods around the city, I, I believe we're generally effective in traditional methods. We put out the speed box, we gather real data. Sometimes there's a perception in areas that's not always backed up by data. Sometimes there's a, an understanding that there is probably a problem and it shows that there is. So we do targeted enforcement. Sometimes it's a new, a new person to the neighborhood and we can eliminate that. But there are chronic problems throughout the city that no matter how much enforcement you have, still remain issues. So we did, as everybody knows, we put in some temporary speed humps on Klimp Street. That has worked well, but it is not a permanent solution. They're expensive, you're bolting them into your asphalt streets. People go around them if they fail. They do have a lifespan, they're just, they're just hard, you know, heavy duty. There's an expectation then, I would assume by the residents, that they would be replaced. And so, you know, talking to Commissioner Martin, talking to commissioner, other commissioners, talking to Chief Kitchens, talking to Brian Faust, there are a number of what we would call engineered traffic, traffic solutions that we could start to implement in specific areas in the community. Again, we could do this as a pilot program. Some of the ones that I, that I've put down here, let me go page, previous page, that I put on here, and I've given you some examples for chicanes. These are everything from alternate pavement markings to raised curbs or landscape islands used to provide horizontal deflection. What that really means is it tricks your eye. It's not, it doesn't look like a straight runway. There's slight variations in the road that inherently make a person slow down, get their senses up. So as you can go through these, what is the problem target area, speed, cut through volume. We have some areas of some residents who believe that their street is a bypass for other congested roadways. Local roads and streets are a good use of that. Curbs extensions or bump outs, don't focus too much on the pictures. These are, these can be drastically different. You evaluate the area, you have to see what you could do. But again, this creates some sort of differentiation in the visual field as you move through streets. One-way foreclosure restrictions, we may look at that in some areas. We have some very narrow streets. A lot of those streets, you know, on the west side of Tenth Street along Spruce, heading north and south, are open ditched, very narrowed. They're never going to be curbed and guttered, probably in my lifetime because of the cost and, and how close those homes are. But that is something we probably should look at for certain areas or communities who have done that. Not the first choice, but definitely something we can look at. Lateral shifts, these are just kind of different ways to say what we've already been saying. But it just goes to show you that there are a lot of different options for some of these engineering solutions that could be more permanent, more long-term. Finally, median, you'd obviously need a wider road. These can be done at intersections of, of larger areas. Something that, again, disrupts the eye, shifts the lane, maybe narrows and widens. Narrowing and widening is a big, big traffic calming issue. And again, problem target areas, design considerations for each of these. Raised intersections, also an option. I don't want you to think that these are the only one, I made your packet with six, but there are, you know, ten other ones. And so this is why And so, this is why, this is why civil engineers are in demand, so it depends on the areas. Again, I don't have a dollar number on this, I can't even tell you necessarily, you could say, what does one of these cost, it could be anywhere in a certain area from maybe 20,000 to, you know, 30, 40,000, but you have to think too that it, it would be there permanently.
It's always there.
It's always there, yeah, no speed humps, you know, that kind of stuff. So, if there was some general idea of looking at a pilot program or some level of funding, then we would move forward with, with bringing something back to you on that.
Would you have to have a planner come in and plan?
We'd have, we'd have to establish some, some criteria, you know, some, I was thinking actually, some of the stuff that the Sidewalk Committee used, prioritize areas around schools, you know, that kind of stuff. Where do we, speeding is a problem everywhere, but, but pedestrian areas, most heavily trafficked areas of pedestrians and those kind of things. You know, we would definitely do a data collection before we made an investment at this level, to make sure that something like this is warranted. How much engineering, we have two engineers now in Public Works, so, you know, they can do some of this stuff, some of it you do need, you know, a little more specialty, but some of the stuff I think we could probably do in-house, so.
That's nice.
I think that would probably be. Now, we can't already throwing out roads already. He wants to get on that list. So, then the next one, this was Mayor Leonhard, this was actually brought to staff's attention by a couple businesses out there a couple of years ago, I think Mr. Wilson has asked about this. Wilson Avenue leads to Zephyr, Hinky, and Heatron, that's the manufacturers on the east side of Limit, behind, to the south of Woodland Village, and I have a picture of this too. It's the primary entry and exit for the employees, but more importantly, the suppliers, if you know the type of work that goes on back there, it's heavy industrial welding. So, this open ditch section, which is the next slide here, is how they access the building, so you're looking south along Wilson Avenue, and so that, it's okay if there's no traffic, and the weather's good, and foul weather and stuff like that, it's not great. You'll see, we had, had just a short little, almost like a preliminary engineering look at this, and what you would, what you would probably do is just move the ditch to the east and, and widen the roadway, you would not go back with a stormwater system.
It needs it because for safety issues, you know.
I used to work out there.
Did you?
Contract work for Hinky.
And the fire trucks compared to fit down the street, and I toured Zephyr not too long ago, and yeah. It's amazing how narrow that street is, it's very narrow, when you, yeah.
So, the, the businesses out there have said if, if they would like to us to provide letters of request from them, that they would do so, but we have a decent number on this, about 750,000, now that's a big number, that was based off, this, this costs about $1,500 to ask a firm to put together a road section and stuff like that, and a probable cost, it's about two years old, so we would, if there was any support behind this, we would go back and do a little bit more work and get, and get better numbers for you, I wanted to throw that out as, as a possible.
Yeah, I think that's a good one.
Either two, I mean, you got three major industries out there, you want to take care of them. And then, yeah.
Okay, so we'll circle back to some of these at the end and see where we are. I did want to provide an update on the two from the original matrix that were under community investment, or exist, these are the existing items. So, as I think, I may have sent in an email, or if you saw, Boys and Girls Club, their CEO went to the Civic, it's another Civic Council of Kansas City as the CEO, so they are in a leadership transition right now, so this should be put on hold. I know they're probably not going to look at expansion until they've identified a new CEO, and they have time to come in and analyze, so no huge rush on this, but I can't, I can't imagine anything here in the next couple of months, we'd move forward on that. We did talk about the fire suppression ADA upgrades, the issue could be a hurdle for small downtown businesses, so I've already gotten, I think, direction from the Commission to come back with a pilot program that we could, that we could look at that program for. City facility investments, so the first one was the comprehensive plumbing and piping replacement, but we put this in the, this was such a pressing issue with the condition of the building that it was included in the CIP. And so, we moved that over to kind of be able to slide in, have a little more room for the speed, engineered speed solutions, and the Wilson Avenue, should you want to go that way, kind of to free up a little bit, it was moved into the actual CIP. So, it would still happen, but, but not out of ARPA funding.
So, this is not really in here, in ARPA anymore?
No, well, I mean, it could be, but that's, that's what staff did to create more space for some, for those other two projects.
Okay.
That direction. And then, we still do have the, the location and creation of the Parks and Recreation Central Office, that's another one where if, if we still continue to get even just thumbs up, we'll bring back maybe like, we'll have somebody do a little schematic of what it would look like, maybe an elevation, and give you some more information on how that process would look, how it would improve the experience for residents coming to the Parks and Recreation, if that was still something the Commission wanted us to explore. Okay, so this is city facility investment, new item number one, staff has done some work on identifying existing city facilities and determining how they can better serve the community today, and more importantly, in the coming years. In 2023, Wollman Aquatic Center will turn 20 years old, and while the facility is well-maintained, and I think well-designed, I obviously wasn't here when it was designed, the zero entry, the slides, it's really a, a well, a pretty park. There have been no significant changes, well, there have been no changes to the footprint, really, or features, we've refinished the slides, we've repainted the pool, we do all that kind of stuff, but, you know, when does stuff become stale? So, staff proposes, or puts in front of the Commission, a project to provide a facelift to the area, to areas of the center, primarily in the form of new recreational element for the larger pool, and then a complete refresh of the kiddie pool area. So, we put, here's the kiddie pool area now, it's not a bad area, it's kind of small, but it's been the same for 20 years, if you had, you know, your kid over years and years and years, a few elements in there. If this was something the Commission wanted us to look at, and, and it is what it is, but Lansing's building a brand-new pool, the Ford has invested in their pools, you know, we're doing our splash park, is it time to, to give our aquatic center, make it look like a first, a city of the first class? So, this has become popular, again, we're not tying you to anything, but the recreational element on the left is something that we have the space for, it's relatively inexpensive, and it's something that's going through municipal pools throughout the country now, very popular, another thing to do besides just jumping off the diving board. Not, again, tying you to this one.
I would love that one, honestly.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was.
And then, on the right, we wouldn't probably put this, just, just put it in the existing kiddie pool, this would probably be more of a kiddie pool renovation, but with some of the stuff you may see at kiddie pool in an Oceans of Fun, or something like that, that is exciting, that, that, you know, shows a little bit of investment in the pool. So, we have gotten some numbers to do kind of a complete refresh of the kiddie pool, that's, that's also plumbing, the plumbing's 20 years old in that area, and we've had some issues with plumbing in the kiddie pool, the rest of it is sound. And we're looking at about $375,000, that, that's all in, that's demo work, that's also all the new elements in the kiddie pool, and maybe able to do a little bit of refreshing the rest of the pool. So, we, just something we wanted to bring to you for your consideration.
Not saying that we're agreeing to this, but just say if we did approve this, how long will it take, would the pool need to be shut down for that season, in order to start the construction away?
Yes, it's a really good question, we found out with the splash pad that you think you start in January and you'll be open, whatever, you know, so my guess is if you approve this, we would start in September of next year.
Okay.
When the, when the pool season ended in 23, I don't think we could turn it around to, we could probably start it in January, but I would worry that the kiddie pool would be shut down the whole summer.
No, I get it, I get it.
And so, we would, we would want to, we would probably want to bring designs to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board, we'd want to have an open house to the public, what do you think of this new kiddie area? So, it would probably be something that we would, we would award early next year, but start the day the pool closes.
Okay, gotcha.
And these are, that you're showing us are just two examples, or these are the ones?
Yeah, I mean, these, we did a little bit of work to try to get what would be appropriate for us, that, that this, this stuff would be appropriate, but there are other, there are other options that we'd be happy to, to run through a bunch of different looks and layouts and stuff like that, without spending too much on design, really focusing on.
That one on the right looks like it's on a cruise ship.
Yeah.
But it, it kind of pops, and that's kind of what we're looking for.
Yeah, that's nice.
We did talk about this one last time, you know, one of the things in the, the guidance from GFOA, but also from the Treasury Department, was sustainability. We have done some work on the installation of solar panels at the community center. Our big thought there is, you know, you always have that 10, 12-year return on investment, but if you can knock out the cost, the capital cost, from the beginning, then you start realizing those savings in year one. And so, we haven't spent a ton of time with, we do have a local firm that does solar installation, so we thought if, if there was any desire for the Commission to get into this, we could start putting pen to paper on what is the return, what could we expect on a electricity reduction over time? Yeah, and we're doing the roof now, so this would be incorporated kind of with that, but it's up to the Commission really, if you want us to pursue this going forward.
So, I guess solar panels on my house?
Sure, there's a lot, a lot of houses in town.
There's a lot of houses, my neighbor down the street, and he saves a lot of money. I mean, those are certain.
The community center is on the list of national, the national list of historic places, is there anything that would prevent putting solar panels on it?
So, there's two pieces to that, the gym and the pool are not.
Oh, okay.
They're, they're add-ons, and there's plenty of surface space on those. If you did get into a situation where it would make the most sense on the east side of the building, for example, you wouldn't want them on the front of the building where people see them, then you could work through a preservation process, but there is considerable amount of roof space that is not covered by them.
I'd like to see a cost benefit.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to score on that.
Can't hurt to get more information, okay, so we'll work on getting some data and get it back to you. So, I think we, let's see if we hit it, all these other items included in the initial discussion was the fire truck, refuse change reserve, we do have that currently in the refuse budget. Again, you'll hear that August 16th is the presentation by the Solid Waste Task Force, is when they'll come to you, so, you know, we want to get out ahead of ourselves, but we do have an opportunity, if there's a cost there, rather than passing that on to residents, to do that. Housing project, housing was also one of the big issues that was put out in, in the overall guidance, and so, I think, I think Mayor Leonhard's the only Commissioner that I'm aware of that has, maybe, I'm sure about, I can't remember, have, have had a discussion with one group in town looking at potentially a project.
Right, that wanted to come do a presentation in front of us.
That would be a group, I think, led by Sister Vicky Perkins, is looking, doing something, so I think she's asked.
Technical housing.
Yeah, to maybe come before the Commission here in the next couple of months with some ideas and some proposals, so, nothing yet, nothing. And then, just so, the other thing we had, still open for discussion is, you know, trails, playground equipment, if there's any parks, recreation amenities, I know Commissioner Wilson, just briefly at the budget meeting, mentioned the sad state of our weight equipment at the Riverfront Community Center. Do we really want people to come and use it, because if you've used it, it is, I mean, it's old. We haven't put it in there just because of the cost, but we talked about treadmills, we rebuild some of the motors in there, and I know, if, you know, if we want to bring people to the community center, there's usually one or two people working out in there, would that be, without raising the rates, would it be a better amenity for the community if we had a weight and cardio equipment that looked like it was from this decade?
I've used some of that equipment since I was a kid.
Yeah, yeah, and, yeah, and I used to.
A lot of that's been piecemealed by stuff here and there, off like a second auction sites, and, but.
Does it still work?
With equipment?
Squeaks a little bit, you get a little rust on your hands.
The trails, I mean, that's an option.
Yeah, we increased trails funding in the CIP, but, you know, as this year, we, you know, we had to make a choice, there was, there's three options, you know, and we chose one, you know, if there was a specific trail project that we thought, hey, we want to go off the annual thing and do that, or a specific project, something at the Performing Arts Center, you know, I don't know how the seating is in there, something like that, that's recreation, recreation-based, wouldn't be a bad idea. So, I'd like to open it up for discussions on what we've talked about tonight, if you'd like, I think we have a laundry list, Penny and I do have about four or five items to bring back to you in study sessions, which is good, it's a good positive direction. But any other comments you have on the presentation, other items you'd like us to look at, we'd be happy to have that discussion again.
I mean, for sure, the wastewater, I think we're all good on that to come to three in there.
Got to do the wastewater thing, that's, that's a, that's a need, not a want.
It's a need, no, it's a need.
Exactly.
And I think, that's, that's what we need to do, is look at the needs first, the wants, you know, after we've, after we've got everything we need.
I think the plumbing is important here in City Hall.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner Martin, you had?
Plumbing right there, I mean, yeah, I'd like some more if I want it, but.
What about the, and we're going to bring the pilot program back, and so I think we have that too.
And, and help for the businesses, that's a good thing. Oh, right, for the fire.
Yeah. Fire suppression and the ADA.
ADA upgrade, yes.
Yes, especially the ADA, that's, that's absolutely.
I think we'll.
Not just fire truck, right?
Fire truck, looking good, want to pursue. Yeah, get, hone in on some numbers and get some lead time.
And the solar numbers.
Okay, so we'll get some numbers on the solar.
And, and then I guess even, just even that, to see how much that project on Wilson.
Okay, so we can, we can hone in on the numbers a little bit.
Since it's been a while.
Yeah, we also have a different, a new Public Works Director, since when those numbers were put together, who may have some different ideas.
So, that's a, you know, have to take care of our current industries if we want other ones to come here, and, you know, it's a safety issue, and they keep, and, for all those employees and everything, so.
Well, you brought up earlier and made sense, you know, fire truck can't go down there safely.
No.
What if there's something that happens and people are trying to get out of there, up that road?
And they're moving big equipment into the street, and when you drive out there to go, like I drove out there to go to work, I couldn't get in because there's.
Sure.
And, yeah, and when I went out there to tour, I said, there's no, what, yeah, I was just gonna make these, and he said, I, we've been concerned about this for years, but I've never really felt like we've been heard, and I said, well, I'll bring it in front of the current Commission and see, you know, do something.
Just falls in those ones that it would be about half of our annual pavement management budget, which is why, you know, as you can see, we've heard there, you know, that we, we, we worked it, it's just a matter of the cost, the cost of that.
So, speaking of taking care of some of our local businesses, one other thought that somebody bounced off me, was what if we were able to, and I don't know if we could do this with money or not, but what if we were able to look at our restaurant industry across town right now, and had some decent-sized gift cards, hey, come in, try these places, send them out locally, and also send them out kind of in Kansas City, Platte City, Weston, trying to get more people to come in, and sample our restaurants and stuff like that. Just, that was an idea that was bounced off, I'm like, well, I don't know, we could do that or not, but.
You know, the, the only thing I can think of similar was I know that the, was that the Education Foundation bought Main Street Bucks.
For their teachers, for their teachers.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, the, the first thing that popped in mind when you said that was something that you could probably potentially do through Camp Leavenworth, you know, kind of, you know, almost like a draw, you know, again, put them in five, the 5K packets, the, the race, the swag bags for the race, or something like that, where we could, you know, try to do something like that. I would just hate to miss anybody. And is it, is it, is it, is it locally, you know, restaurants close and open so quickly, we don't have a business directory, as we've talked about, so I don't have a list of every restaurant in town. We do probably, we could probably get it through like the health inspection records, but that's not necessarily annual.
If there was a way we could generalize it, we're, I mean, I don't want it to be administrative nightmare, but if we wanted to look at something like that, we could generalize it, and then each, you know, anybody coming in could go anywhere they wanted, and then the business owner knows that, hey, they got to bring these back in to us for that refund.
It's almost like the Main Street Bucks program kind of thing, so.
Yes, it is.
Pretty much, then, I guess, yeah, yeah, so.
Which works pretty well.
Yeah, let me give that, let's give that some thought.
I've tried places, I've never been before, I'm like, oh, shoot, I want to go back there.
And then, is it, you know, what does locally owned mean, you know, we have a lot that, that doesn't, so.
Franchises and that too.
Sure, yeah, I mean, is the McDonald's locally owned? I don't know, maybe it is.
He sure thinks he has, he calls me all the time.
It was. It was, Dobsky's, Dobsky's has owned it forever, yeah.
Homers, I know that's, I think it's still locally owned, it's been, it's passed hands a lot of times, but.
I think we had general support for bringing back again a pilot program, or some ideas or support behind the engineered traffic safety measures in, in some of our neighborhoods.
Yeah, we have to make sure where they go though.
We're going to go with the Boys and Girls Club?
Yeah, see, safety first places.
We'll work on that, we'll get to, we'll push them to get a, get new leadership in places as soon as possible. As soon as possible.
And have him come in front of us and say, you have to say.
Yeah, I'd like to know.
Yeah, but you're right, safety first on the, the traffic kind of thing. Because, you know, probably around schools, and we mentioned that earlier, and places of, of people congregating, you know, Haymarket Square, you know, places like that, you know, look at, look at traffic control around those places where there are people, especially children.
I just watched a kid driving yesterday or a couple of days ago, literally just pushed my mailbox over with a car, wasn't paying attention on his phone, just, I don't know what he was doing.
Did you say that your kid was?
A kid.
I was going to say yours kind of.
My youngs cannot drive yet, so.
So just curious, I heard from one business owner, so this is not all complaining, the speeding issue in downtown area.
Yes.
Fourth Street, Fourth Street is.
Yeah, especially where it's, anywhere where it's 20 miles an hour, people don't want to slow down.
A lot of the Fourth Street is because of how the lights are timed. If you drive it more than once or twice, you know that you got to hustle to get that third light. And so that is addressed, the signal timing. And so they do adjust them and they do, they do, but yeah, Fourth Street mainly. The other ones, I've never heard anything about, like the side streets. There's too much, there's too much on-street parking, there's too much start and stop, but, but Fourth Street corridor to make the lights is what I hear.
So just, just putting it out there, is speed, what are your thoughts on speed bumps?
Oh, in the downtown?
They're going to be remodeled, so.
Yeah. Fourth Street's going to be completely remodeled, so I would.
So will we, would need any, like downtown, you said you haven't heard any other complaints?
No, no, other than the Fourth Street trying to make that third light.
Just curious, just curious.
No, just Fourth Street.
Okay.
Just my thoughts on speed bumps in general and clamp, at least I can, the area they're at, they're working, so.
Yeah, and so I'm just.
And those people that live there will tell you about it.
Right, and they're happy about that.
Oh, yes, have them there.
And I think also the Fourth Street design that we have does have a median preventing internally, so again, that's a visual disruption that, that should absolutely help.
And so it's not an issue, I don't want to make an issue, I just received it, you know, I wanted to bring it to the commission.
Yeah, Fourth Street's one thing, the cross streets, I don't think that seems to have the same problem.
Well, I just heard one complaint. Good idea. What you're talking about, I think you could really see some good benefit from that.
Yeah, I think so too. Okay.
Well, no, I just know, I have, well, I have witnessed it myself several times, but different times a day, you know, going down Spruce, more out towards Kansas City, Kansas Community College.
Yeah.
But coming in 20. They don't, the side streets, you know, that, I guess that stop sign's optional.